Call the meeting to order of the Wilmer City Council for Monday, May 18th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Aman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkins.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent items.
Also move.
Seconded. Most have been made and seconded. Any adjustments to that?
Did you want to put that in? The league?
Yes, thank you. In front of the council, there is a letter from the League of Minnesota Cities that I would like to address at the end of the meeting, if possible. Anything else? Okay, motion's been made and seconded for the consent items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. This evening, we're very fortunate that we have a retirement of Police Officer Michael Markaden and Chief Felton, if you'd like to come forward, please, along with Sergeant Markaden. We'll let the chief go first for you.
Sure. Rammed quarters.
Out of camera view, right?
That we can see.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, thank you for having us here tonight. Tonight's a big night. We're here to recognize Sergeant Michael Markaden on his retirement. In many ways, this is a sad day for our department because we're losing a friend, a fellow officer, and a member of our family in blue. Mike Markaden started with the Wilmer Police Department around March 21st, 1985, after graduating from St. Mary's University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Some of Mike's many positions with the Wilmer Police Department have included as a patrol officer, two separate assignments to the detective unit, three separate assignments to the C-6 Drug Task Force. He was a union steward, a school resource officer, a DARA instructor. He was a charter member of the Wilmer Police Department SWAT team. He was a co-coordinator for the Wilmer Police Department Youth Canoe Expedition back in 93 through 95, and he was promoted to Patrol Sergeant in 2009. Mike has also been a very active member in the community, being a host member for Stingers Players, a hockey coach, a Boundary Waters guide, and Wednesday's Men's League as a hockey player. And, Mike, it's been relayed to me that the penalty box will be an empty and lonely place once you leave, too. Mike is also the proud and dedicated dad to two sons, Mitchell and Millen, and Mike can often be found in the crowd supporting them at school and sporting events, too. We at the Wilmer Police Department wish Mike well on his retirement. It's safe to say that there have been, there will be a noticeable gap in the department when Mike leaves. He takes away 30 years, two months, and 10 days of experience that only those who walk the line can truly understand. We have many dedicated officers that will work to continue the mission and attempt to fill his footsteps, which will be difficult. In over 30 years of law enforcement, Sergeant Markaden has been there, done that, and has seen just about everything. Now, when he's retired, he'll have all the time in the world to tell you about it, too. You know, thank you, Mike, for your service to country, state, and community. We'll miss you, and we wish you the best in your retirement.
I'd like to say a few words, council, citizens of Wilmer. I've had the pleasure of serving for six police chiefs and five mayors for this city. My entire adult life, I was reflecting back last week, has been spent here in Wilmer, right out of college, and that's, that's an amazing thing when I think about it. So, I'm looking forward to some retirement. I'm changing gears a little bit and starting a new career in whatever and enjoying that. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience. About 28 years ago, Lyle Gettards, the chief back then, gave me a little break, and he seen something in me, and for that, I was internally grateful. And for the next three decades, I think I've paid him back on that promise back then, so, and I'm proud to say that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, a little bit before the council meeting started, we had a conversation in the, in the hall, and I remember when I started here as fire chief in 2000, and I always knew that when you showed up, it was going to be interesting. So, you've served our city well, you've served the citizens well, and one thing that I, as from the mayor's office, I can tell you is you always served, wore the uniform proudly and with respect, and I am grateful for that. So, council, any comments anybody else would like to make? Otherwise, we have a gift here for you from the council and from the city. If you want to come forward. Thank you for your years of service.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. No, you can stick around for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, or...
There's no movie cartoon like Exit Stage, right?
Okay. Gotcha.
That's what I'm going to do.
Thanks again.
Me, too.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the assessment hearing, 2015 Street and Other Improvements. City Engineer Sean Christensen.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. We saw most of this here a while back on the improvement hearing, but actually, before I start, I would like to wish everyone a happy National Public Works Week, believe it or not. I don't know if that's good timing or not, but when you see the public works guys on the vehicles of blue, give them a high five, or a wave, or a honk, or whatever. They're doing a great job out there, so just really appreciate that. I want to give a little plug there. Now, on to the rest of the public works that we talked about earlier. This per-state statute, we have to do the, the assessment hearing, which allows, allows the residences, residents, the opportunity to discuss the assessments after they get in the notice and, you know, in a public forum. So, the purpose of this hearing, as you can see, is to review and explain the assessment costs associated with these 2015 projects that were previously approved by the city council, and also to obtain input from interested parties concerning these assessments. Somebody let me know if I get off on my notes here, if you would, please. I think I'm going to try to keep up here. The project schedule, most of this, or some of this has happened already. Of course, the improvement hearing we had on March 2nd, many of you are aware of that. The assessment hearing is today. We anticipate beginning construction, the beginning part of June, after this, after this hearing is done, we've got bids in place for these projects you're about to hear about. And then, we're, we're hoping to end construction around the middle of October in order to get done with things before, before snow flies and before we can get, ground starts getting too cold. We've got four, four different projects involved in this, in this assessment hearing this year, and the numbers don't mean much to anybody else, but we've got reconstruction, we've got overlays, we've got a new construction, and we've got a lighting project. Actually, I think my notes are wrong. I don't think we have a new construction. Sorry about that. So, this slide here will show you the assessment history. Oops. I hope you got to see it.
Look quick.
Let me see what else I got going on here.
Cody. Take him back.
There we go. Did you do it, or I? Okay, thanks. All right, so this is a history from 2007 through current year of what the assessment hearings for simply the reconstruct and the overlay costs. Okay, the overlay costs are the bottom line, the red line, and they, in 2007, were at $17 and change, and unfortunately, today, they're at the $32 mark. The reconstruction in 2007, so eight years ago, was at 53, almost $54, and today, they're at $72. And you'll see a slide here in a little bit that directly relates that to construction costs. Actually, these have raised slower than, or increased slower than the construction costs over that time. So, assessments, assessment schedule. This year, the reminder notices went out. Will go out in September. The partial payments are allowed with full payments without interest by prior to October 31st. In next year, payments, of course, are collected along with your annual property taxes by, by the county until those are paid in full. Your first half payment due dates, along with your taxes, are May 15th. Second half, of course, that puts that on October 15th, and prepayments allowed before November 15th. As I mentioned, this chart director is pretty closely related to the assessment raise, raise in value. These are the top six street expenses that we see at any given, any given project. The, if you can't read it, it's common excavation, concrete driveways, aggregate road base, bituminous base course, curb and gutter, and then the bituminous wear course. And, as you can see, the bituminous, which is the asphalt, the black stuff that we're driving on, are the top lines, as well as the, sorry, as well as the concrete driveway. So, reconstruction projects, in a nutshell, we remove the bituminous that's out there, we remove and replace curb and gutter as needed, utilities are replaced and repaired as needed, storm sewer improvements, grading gravel base, tile and tile services. What do we got going on here? Did we lose it?
Lost it again.
Okay, I guess I'll trust the council can follow along with the handouts I gave you as a backup plan in hopes that our chart will come back. Sorry about that.
John? Just a minute. For the public's notice, we did have staff over on two separate occasions this past week to try to make sure that this didn't happen again tonight, so it's not something that staff didn't look into. It was looked into by staff. We thought we had the problem corrected. Thank you, Sean, and continue.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was mentioning, the reconstruct project, we basically take everything down to utilities, if need be, replace and repair utilities, build everything back up as far as fabric, if needed, gravel base, bituminous material. There's, there are two streets this year included in the reconstruct. That would be Carolina Avenue and 21st Street Southwest portions thereof. The typical new road section will be 10 inches of gravel base, be four inches of bituminous. Fabric is needed, tile, of course, tile and tile services, and curb and gutter is needed. The two streets are about just under one-half mile of, of reconstruction. Carolina Avenue specifically is page eight in your, in your documents. I don't know if I've got them numbered or not. Hopefully, I do. It's almost 700 feet of street. The original reconstruction was in 1964. So, there was, there is six and a half inches of aggregate and one and a half inches of bituminous currently on that street. It's got a cast iron water line that was done in 1960, an eight-inch CSP, which is Clay Pipe Sanitary Sewer, that was also done in 1960. The current rating, as I've mentioned many times on my pavement condition, PCI, Pavement Condition Index, is rated at a 20. There's holes in the water line that were fixed in 1997 and 2005. The proposed section on this, as I mentioned, will be 10 inches of gravel, four inches of bituminous, fabric, new water, new sewer, remove and replace curb and gutter. The next page, 21st Street Southwest portion of it, it's 160 feet north of 23rd Avenue. For those that live there, it's where we left off last time, and it will take it all the way to night, north to 19th Avenue. Current length is almost a quarter of a mile. It was originally constructed in 1983. It's got four inches of aggregate base and three inches of bituminous, and the rating on it is a 45. It was, it was removed from a 2014 project list, so this is a repeat for the construction. Mayor, let me ask, do you want to do the comments? Let me go through this first. Okay. 1503, which is the overlay projects, these are a combination of state aid and local streets. There are five segments this year, almost three miles. Our overlay will mill off, which is take off the top inch and a half, or two inches, mostly near the curb. We'll remove and replace curb and gutter as needed, correct any damaged areas, and then we'll overlay that with an inch and a half to two inches of bituminous street. So, when we're done, you'll have a, a new street without going to full depth reclamation. We have almost three miles this year. We've got a portion of Trot Avenue Southeast, a portion of Candy, Ohio Avenue Southwest, a portion of 23rd Street Southwest, 7th Street Southeast, and 25th Street Southeast. Excuse me. Trot Avenue Southeast is a section of our state aid project. It's almost a half a mile, .45 miles, so 2,400 feet. It was reconstructed in 1995 from first to fifth. It's got 13 inches of aggregate base, six inches of bituminous, and the rating on it is currently an 80. The plan is to mill off an inch and a half and replace that inch and a half with new asphalt or bituminous. And it was currently, it was most recently removed from the project list in 2012. Candy, Ohio Avenue Southwest, and a portion of that is the next, is another state aid street. It's just over a quarter of a mile in length. It was reconstructed in 1992. It's got 10 inches of aggregate base and six inches of bituminous currently. It's currently at a rating of a 70, where the plan there is as well to mill off an inch and a half and repave that inch and a half. 23rd Street Southwest, this is north of Trot Avenue. The length is just over 300 feet. It was previously overlaid in 1989. It's got 15 inches of aggregate base, five and a half inches of bituminous currently, a rating of 65. Once again, it was, the plan is to mill and pay, repave an inch and a half of bituminous. 7th Street Southeast is 800 feet, constructed in 1979. It's got five inches of aggregate base, an inch and a half of bituminous. It's a rate, currently rated as 65, and it, once again, we're going to mill with inch and a half and repave that inch and a half. 25th Street Southeast, 1,500 feet in length, is constructed in 1983 from fifth, fifth to fourth, and it was constructed in 1993 from 7th to 5th. It's got four inches of aggregate base and three inches of bituminous, and the ratings range from 45 to 65. That finishes up our streets for the assessments. The last project we have for assessments would be a street lighting project on the newly reconstructed, I'm sorry, new construction on 12th Street Southeast, that are between Gash Property and Bethesda. It's a street lighting project, so it's a little, assessed a little bit differently, but we put it in the same assessment hearing. The projects will be lights similar to, LED lights similar to what's on Wilmer Avenue. That's the plan at this point, and I've got the details here. If you're interested, the poles will be wood, 35-foot class six poles for those that are interested, but, and that'll be assessed by those three property owners along that line. Last page of the document there in front of you, our project bid total, these are, these projects all have been bid, was $2,138,231. Property owners will be assessed $415,668. The city share, of course, the remainder, is $1,722,563. The reconstruction cost per foot, as I mentioned earlier, if you're on a reconstruct street, is $72 per linio foot of property frontage. Your overlay cost per linio foot of property frontage is $32. I've got a breakdown of the projects if you're interested, but at this point, we broke it out a little bit further. The assessed share of the total bid projects is 19, just under 19 and a half percent, while the city share of that assessed projects are 80 and a half percent. And that concludes my information, unless you have questions for me.
Okay, we'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody that wants to make comments on Carolina Avenue? 21st Street Southwest. Then we go on to the overlay, Trot Avenue Southeast. Candy, Ohio Avenue Southwest. 23rd Street Southwest. 7th Street Southeast. 25th Street Southeast. That concludes the reconstruct, and then on the street lighting, on 12th Street Southeast. Is there anybody from the public that wants to make any comments on any part of the assessment hearing? Seeing none, we'll close and bring it to the council table.
Mr. Mayor, can I read a letter before you close?
I'm sorry, yes. Kevin?
I'd like to read a appeal letter into the record for an individual on 21st Street Southwest, Evelyn Stewart, to whom it may concern. I am writing this to appeal to $5,400 assessment in street repairs for 21st Street Southwest. My reason for appealing is because I cannot afford to pay such a high assessment amount as I am the only occupant and only income in the house. With what I make an hour and after taxes, my wages cover my house payment, utilities, and monthly expenses, and there is nothing left over. Even with my income tax refund every year, I have to use it to pay my property taxes. So, the $1,500 would be a real hardship for me to pay as an additional expense. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Counsel? We'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Councilmember Anderson?
I'll move to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the assessment hearing. Discussion. Assessment roll. Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we normally wait 30 days after the adoption of the assessment hearing, consider any appeals. It is not staff's recommendation that we do that this evening, and that we have two projects with, already bid, with Dunick Brothers or Dunick, Inc., and then the street lighting project mentioned at the end will be done with an agreement with our own municipal utilities. So, it's staff recommendation that we adopt three successive resolutions awarding these contracts and just get the notice to proceed going so the construction season can begin.
Okay, we have to take them individually, though, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I didn't see anything in our minutes, so can you help us with the wordage?
Well, at this, at this point, we'll, we'll award the contract to Dunick, Inc. on 1501A. I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but if Sean could make comment from the bids, but it's our larger project, but we'll fill those dollar amounts in. I think we brought the bids to the Public Works Committee earlier, just to look at.
I'll move to approve. 1501A, 50 to 1 dash A, yeah.
Motion's been made, a resolution's been made to introduce and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. And the same on 1503A.
Move to approve. 1501A, 50 to 1 dash A, yeah.
Motion's been made, a resolution's been made to introduce and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we normally wait 30 days after the adoption of the assessment hearing, consider any appeals. It is not staff's recommendation that we do that this evening, and that we have two projects with, already bid, with Dunick Brothers or Dunick, Inc., and then the street lighting project mentioned at the end will be done with an agreement with our own municipal utilities. So, it's staff recommendation that we adopt three successive resolutions awarding these contracts and just get the notice to proceed going so the construction season can begin.
Okay, we have to take them individually, though, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I didn't see anything in our minutes, so can you help us with the wordage?
Well, at this, at this point, we'll, we'll award the contract to Dunick, Inc. on 1501A. I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but if Sean could make comment from the bids, but it's our larger project, but we'll fill those dollar amounts in. I think we brought the bids to the Public Works Committee earlier, just to look at.
I'll move to approve. 1501A, 50 to 1 dash A, yeah.
Motion's been made, a resolution's been made to introduce and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. And the same on 1503A. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Discussion. Resolution, roll call.
Councilmember Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And then the resolution for 1503B.
I'll move to approve that, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes, and then the street project 1509. Some will.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Did you get both those, Kevin? I'll let you catch up.
We're going.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next, we have the open forum. Scott Johnson. Again, I'll make the same comments I made last week, and that is that the council will take the information that you present to us. If there's follow-up questions, I will refer that to the interim city administrator for clarification, and the staff will follow up with you if we need to. So, it's not that we're being disrespectful. We're hearing what you have to say.
Right on. Thank you.
Go ahead, Scott.
I think, first of all, I...
Address, please.
The address is 3326 Eagle Ridge Drive West in Wilmer, Minnesota. First of all, what I'm really hoping for, not only tonight, but really moving forward, this is my hometown. I haven't lived anywhere else but here. This is a town that I care deeply for, and I've never seen this divided before. Churches divide and split, sometimes over the most ridiculous things, as we all know, and I just, really, it's my hope, I see a number of different things. I've done some homework. I think I have a pretty good idea on what was going on around here, and it wasn't acceptable. And, Mr. Mayor, actually, I want to say that I appreciate the fact that it didn't take you long in office to realize there was a problem here, and that that problem had to be fixed. It's not fun to do. It's a gosh awful thing to do, but you did it. You did what you had to do, and I appreciate that fact. No matter how you liked the person who was in the administrative position, it wasn't working here, folks. There was a problem, and it was more than one problem. I happened to be involved with one where the administrator had made a decision to padlock and shut down a public building with absolutely no evidence whatsoever. They hadn't done environmental studies yet. They had no data whatsoever. They just padlocked the doors and shut it down. And if I'm not mistaken, I think Audrey knew, and I think Dennis knew, but I don't believe the rest of the council knew that that was going to happen. Did you happen to know it, Mr. Aman, or Christianson?
We're not going to...
Okay. So, my point is, you cannot run a city when you are working with two or three reps, council...
That finishes up our streets for the assessments. The last project we have for assessments would be a street lighting project on the newly reconstructed, I'm sorry, new construction on 12th Street Southeast. They're between Gash Property and Bethesda. It's a street lighting project, so it's assessed a little bit differently, but we put it in the same assessment hearing. The projects will be lights similar to, LED lights similar to what's on Wilmer Avenue. That's the plan at this point. And I've got the details here if you're interested. The poles will be wood, 35-foot Class 6 poles for those that are interested. And that'll be assessed by those three property owners along that line. Last page of the document there in front of you, our project bid total, these projects all have been bid, was $2,138,231. Property owners will be assessed $415,668. The city share, of course, the remainder, is $1,722,563. The reconstruction cost per foot, as I mentioned earlier, if you're on a reconstruct street, is $72 per linial foot of property frontage. Your overlay cost per linial foot of property frontage is $32. I've got a breakdown of the projects if you're interested, but at this point, we broke it out a little bit further. The assessed share of the total bid projects is 19, just under 19 and 1/2 percent, while the city share of that assessed projects are 80 and 1/2 percent. And that concludes my information unless you have questions for me.
Okay, we'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody that wants to make comments on Carolina Avenue? 21st Street Southwest. Then we go on to the overlay, Trot Avenue Southeast. Candy Ohio Avenue Southwest. 23rd Street Southwest. 7th Street Southeast. 25th Street Southeast. That concludes the reconstruct. And then on the street lighting, on 12th Street Southeast. Is there anybody from the public that wants to make any comments on any part of the assessment hearing? Seeing none, we'll close and bring it to the council table.
Mr. Mayor, can I read a letter before you close?
I'm sorry, yes, Kevin?
I'd like to read a appeal letter into the record for an individual on 21st Street Southwest, Evelyn Stewart, to whom it may concern. I am writing this to appeal the $5,400 assessment in street repairs for 21st Street Southwest. My reason for appealing is because I cannot afford to pay such a high assessment amount as I am the only occupant and only income in the house. With what I make an hour and after taxes, my wages cover my house payment, utilities, and monthly expenses, and there is nothing left over. Even with my income tax refund every year, I have to use it to pay my property taxes. So the $1,500 would be a real hardship for me to pay as an additional expense. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Counsel? We'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Counsel member Anderson?
I'll move to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the assessment hearing. Discussion.
Assessment roll.
Hearing done, roll call.
Council member Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we normally wait 30 days after the adoption of the assessment
hearing, consider any appeals. It is not staff's recommendation that we do that this evening, and that we have two projects with already bid with Dunick Brothers or Dunick, Inc., and then the street lighting project mentioned at the end will be done with an agreement with our own municipal utilities. So it's staff recommendation that we adopt three successive resolutions awarding these contracts and just get the notice to proceed going so the construction season can begin.
Okay, we have to take them individually though, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I didn't see anything in our minutes, so can you help us with the wordage?
Well, at this point, we'll award the contract to Dunick, Inc. on 1501A. I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but Sean could make comment from the bids, but it's our larger project, but we'll fill those dollar amounts in. I think we brought the bids to the Public Works Committee earlier, just to look at.
I'll move to approve. 5001-A, 5001-A, yeah.
Motion's been made, a resolution's been made to introduce and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council member Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. And the same on 1503A. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Discussion. Resolution, roll call.
Council member Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And then the resolution for 1503B.
I'll move to approve that, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council member Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes, and then the street project 1509. Some more.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Did you get both those, Kevin? I'll let you catch up.
We're going.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Council member Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next, we have the open forum. Scott Johnson. Again, I'll make the same comments I made last week, and that is that the council will take the information that you present to us. If there's follow-up questions, I will refer that to the interim city administrator for clarification, and the staff will follow up with you if we need to. So it's not that we're being disrespectful, we're hearing what you have to say.
Right on. Thank you.
Go ahead, Scott.
I think, first of all, I-
Address, please.
The address is 3326 Eagle Ridge Drive West in Wilmer, Minnesota. First of all, what I'm really hoping for, not only tonight, but really moving forward, this is my hometown. I haven't lived anywhere else but here. This is a town that I care deeply for, and I've never seen this divided before. Churches divide and split, sometimes over the most ridiculous things, as we all know. And I just, really, it's my hope, I see a number of different things. I've done some homework. I think I have a pretty good idea on what was going on around here, and it wasn't acceptable. And Mr. Mayor, actually, I want to say that I appreciate the fact that it didn't take you long in office to realize there was a problem here, and that that problem had to be fixed. It's not fun to do, it's a gosh awful thing to do, but you did it. You did what you had to do, and I appreciate that fact. No matter how you liked the person who was in the administrative position, it wasn't working here, folks. There was a problem, and it was more than one problem. I happened to be involved with one where the administrator had made a decision to padlock and shut down a public building with absolutely no evidence whatsoever. They hadn't done environmental studies yet, they had no data whatsoever, they just padlocked the doors and shut it down. And if I'm not mistaken, I think Audrey knew, and I think Dennis knew, but I don't believe the rest of the council knew that that was going to happen. Did you happen to know it, Mr. Amen, or Mr. Christensen?
We're not going to comment.
Okay. So, my point is, you cannot run a city when you are working with two or three reps, council people, and not the others. You, Houston, tranquility base here, we've got a problem. That can't go on. I don't know if somebody had the conversation with our administrator to say, but this, don't hire another one without telling them. You work for all of us, or you work for none of us. You will treat all nine with respect. That includes the mayor and eight council people. You will treat us kindly and professionally. You don't have to like us, you don't have to want to go to dinner with us, but you must be respectful, you must honor your obligation to be a professional, and you must communicate equally with us here. And that, folks, was not going on. I guarantee you, this wasn't a lynching. It was a long time in the works, and I appreciate the fact that you stepped up and did what needed to be done, and you didn't take three years to do it. Now, I don't like when anybody loses their position. Going along with that, moving forward, I hope that that's explained clearly to the administrator or the manager or whatever their title is going to be, that you work for all of us or you work for none of us. With that said, there's a man who is much wiser than I was, or ever will be, or I would say anybody in this room, and he was asked by an expert in the law, and that's not a lawyer, it was a religious teacher, and he was asked, "Teacher, what is the greatest commandment?" And his response was, two different versions, but one of them was, "To love God with all of your heart and all of your mind and all of your strength." And, and he added the word "and," a very powerful word, "Love your neighbor as yourself."
Thank you for your time, for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Warren Erickson.
Warren Erickson, 1607 Upper Trentwood Circle, Wilmer. Mr. Mayor, council members, I attended the Labor Relations Meeting last Tuesday, and to say the least, I was very impressed. The group of you sat up there where you are now, you communicated between yourselves, you did an excellent job. And it goes back about a month ago, I was here, I made a comment about civility that was Gary Geiger promoted a number of years ago, and I thought, you know, we're turning the line here. You're doing a good job. And I also walked away from that meeting thinking, you know, you listen to your people from your wards, because I got the impression you changed your mind on how you were going to go about the new city administrator, advertising, hiring, whatever. But then, what comes out Friday night, I'm out of town for the weekend, but with the internet and everything, you know, comes out about this open mic that someone was recorded on that night, that afternoon. And I thought, oh, here we go again as a community. You know, everything, you know, we seem to come together, and then we got groups that are against people, groups that are for people. I have two wishes tonight. One, whoever did, said that that night, that afternoon, would have the decency, the professionalism, to stand up sometime during this meeting and apologize. Because the reason for that is it's putting a negative light on the rest of the council members up here, except for two people. One, Mr. Amen, because he was being videoed, and Mrs. Nelson, because it was a male's voice. That's one. The second thing I'd like to all of you to give serious consideration for, when your term is up, please consider not to run. I mean that wholeheartedly. It's time for a change. I know there's going to be a recall going on, whether I like it or not, that's the material. But I ask each of you that are sitting up front tonight to really give serious thought to that, to give some trust back to this community. And I think the only way it's going to happen is for new blood to sit where you're sitting tonight, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Wayne Nelson, I live at 1505 Hanson Drive Southwest. My first order of business tonight is to extend my sincere sympathy to Councilmember Christensen and his family on the passing of his mother, Jean, this last week. However, I am here on behalf of the Recall Ron Committee, and tonight, we would like to present to City Clerk Kevin Halliday the official certificate of intent to recall Councilmember Ron Christensen as Ward 2 office holder. The grounds for the recall are as follows. Councilmember Ron Christensen violated the trust of the citizens of Wilmer by bypassing accepted procedures for termination of the city administrator. This action was taken despite unprecedented public outcry and fellow council member requests for supporting information and justification. The orchestrated action appears to have violated the open meeting law. For the separation agreement, these actions cost the city an estimated $150,000. Councilmember Christensen has used his position on the council to advance his personal agenda. He fought the West Winds Workforce Housing Project at every opportunity, requiring the project be bought before the council on many occasions. The result of the project comprised mainly of rental property versus proposed homeownership. He belittled the West Winds project before, during, and after completion. Yet, on April 6, 2015, he sought and received approval of his own high-density rental twin homes in the Woodbury addition. Note, the council approved it without one question, and it passed as a consent item agenda. On January 15, 2015, Councilmember Christensen violated the law when he drove around barricades and through a restricted area established to protect the public and first responders while responding to a gas leak. This action unnecessarily compromised the safety of the workers, citizens, and property, as well as potentially exposing the city to financial liability. This recall effort is based on representative acts of malfeasance committed by Councilmember Christensen since January 2015 while serving on the Wilmer City Council. We invite the public to visit our website at recallron.org to learn more about each of these points of malfeasance. Due to the volume of the content, please view the recallron.org on your personal computer rather than on a mobile device or tablet. As I present the certificate of intent to recall Councilmember Ron Christensen, I like to note, the petition itself has been initial by the city clerk. A copy is included in the packet. You can see there are no signatures on the petition at this time. We will begin collecting signatures immediately. All two residents who go to the poll to vote on the referendum tomorrow are invited to step across the street to the east of WAC to sign the petition. Please be prepared to show your identification prior to signing the petition. Thank you to the public for the outpouring of support we have already received, and will continue to receive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Riddler, 1912 20th Avenue, Southwest Wilmer, Minnesota. Mr. Mayor, my understanding is shortly after you took office, you determined that there was, excuse me, determined that our former city administrator might not have the support of the city council. You then took upon yourself to contact the city attorney about the potential problem. You then met with the city attorney likely more than once. The city attorney apparently suggested that a voluntary separation agreement be considered. Further, I understand you discussed and suggested a voluntary separation agreement with the city administrator. She then hired an attorney to negotiate with the city attorney the terms in voluntary separation agreement. The city administrator then agreed she would sign the negotiated agreement. Mr. Mayor, I believe that proposed agreement was then distributed to the council members for review. At the council meeting on March 16, 2015, a motion was made, seconded, and passed to accept that agreement, as negotiated by the party's receptive attorneys. So Mayor, just to clarify for the public, you're the person that started the whole ball rolling on this whole matter, not Ron, you, and orchestrated with the city administrator the manner in which the voluntary separation was occurred. You need to step up and say that. He had nothing to do with this. Who's next? The other ones? I'm not happy. I've been paying taxes since 1984, never seen so much BS in my life. Listen, step up. You started the ball rolling. Tell the people what's going on, because this is separating our city. Do you understand? This is divide, not conquer. The gentleman that stood up was supposed to lead the city in the moving forward. Now he's separating our city. You're part of this. You donated money to the gentleman that ran against him. The person that led your campaign started the recall, she spread the emails that got everybody jazzed. Step up, sir. You need to step up. Thank you.
Mayor, councilman, my name is Gary Gilman. I live at 500 Northwest 34th Street in Wilmer. Got two issues to talk about tonight, and they'll be brief in both of them. I'd like to address the misguided recall committee. Few comments. For a group of people claiming to have the best interest of the city of Wilmer as their primary concern, their performance and method of delivery at the recent council meeting could not have been more damaging or misguided. Someone possessing pure malice aforethought could not have done a better job of maligning and tarnishing our great city's public image. Sadly, they know not the damage they have wrought, nor do they have any appreciation for what possible responses that may be generated from those that disagree with them. There is no upside or benefit to the city by this plot, an outright abuse of the recall positions of our city charter. In reality, it is nothing more than an ongoing frustration of certain individuals with the results of the last general election. They are not entitled to a second chance, a do-over at great public expense before the next general election. My other comments have to do with the last council meeting. Councilmember Johnson brought something up that periodically is discussed, and that's the $600,000 to $700,000 the FAA is withholding from the city of Wilmer. Week later, the West Central Tribune wrote a great story about FAA turning land over. Now, we put some historical markers out, but they didn't address the basics. You know, the old reporter instincts, the how, whens, and whys. How much money is owed to the city of Wilmer? How long has this money been owed to the city of Wilmer? When is it going to be paid? Why did it happen? It'd be nice to see that covered in the West Central Tribune. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Linda Ketcher.
Mayor, council, interim city administrator, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to start by saying, usually, I think in politics, there's three groups of people, happy, unhappy, and fired up. I think we've got the fired up group here tonight. Thank you for listening. I urge all citizens of Ward 2 to refuse to sign the recall petition due to its lack of merit in both substance and intent. I am here tonight to support Councilman Ron Christensen, a dedicated and many times elected official, a respected businessman, friend, neighbor, and family man. There's been a group working behind the scenes, not in the citizens' best interests, but their own. Why would that be? Perhaps their discontent at losing the favor of power they once had, wielded behind the scenes, caused them to unite, to turn the tables. They have been at it a long time. How best to do that? Discredit those in their way. Start with a long-term elected official, just like what you see happening tonight. Are the accusations true? Truth doesn't matter with this group. It's the outcome that matters. I have been the target of some of the members of this group. Last year, I was appointed to the EDC operations board by the city. Commissioners on the joint power board were called by individuals who urged them to vote down my appointment, which they did. After the allegations were exposed as unfounded, the second vote resulted in unanimous approval of my appointment. This petition is nothing more than an effort to capitalize on the public emotion evoked in response to the departure of the former administrator, which was further fueled by the follow-up town hall, where they identified a candidate to run in a recall election who was more to their liking. Whether they are aware of it or not, those involved in this recall effort are causing irreparable damage and division as they continue their pursuit of justice, all the while furthering the agenda of the power brokers in the background. The black eye that this city has been receiving is due to the ongoing dysfunction defined and caused not by our council, but by those who are now capitalizing on the public sentiment evoked by the departure of the former city administrator. I trust and support Councilman Ron Christensen. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Jessica Roloff.
Good evening, it's Jessica Roloff, 3501 15th Avenue, Southeast, Wilmer. And I just want to clarify again that, as president of the League, I'm neither for nor against the recall committee. Unfortunately, after our last city council meeting, the Recall Ron Facebook page, I think, inadvertently stopped on my picture. I am not on the committee. I've clarified that publicly many times, but I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to make sure that everybody understands that. Most importantly, I want to remind everybody of the school referendum tomorrow, and that voting is open from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. You vote at the WAC building, that's a little different, you don't go to your neighborhood polling place, you go to WAC, which is 511, 6th Street, Southwest in Wilmer. If anybody needs a ride or has some questions about what they need to bring with to the polls, they can sure contact the League website or the League email, lvwwilmermn@gmail.com. That's lvwwilmermn@gmail.com. Or you can give me a call, 320-214-7972. That's 214-7972, and the League would be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Sue Quest.
Hi, my name is Sue Quest, 1451 Hanson Drive, Southwest. Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople, and interim administrator. Trust goes both ways. Since 2012, there's been a lack of trust between some of our elected officials, staff, and others. An email from the chamber director to our former city administrator that was discovered broke that trust way back in 2012. Several councilmen were referred to in less than flattering terms. An agenda behind the scenes was also revealed. Some of you are once again thinking, another conspiracy theory? Perhaps. Judge for yourself, the evidence is clear. Tonight, I formally submit the November 7, 2012, email to the mayor, council, city clerk, and the West Central Tribune and the radio station as public record. Perhaps now the media will research and report so the public has full and accurate information. Before you judge Councilman Ron Christensen, be sure you have the facts. I know Ron, he's very trustworthy, and over 20 years, so have the majority of his constituents from Ward 2 and the residents of Wilmer. Thank you, Ron, for your service, and the other four of the majority, you have done an excellent job serving the people. You make sure our tax dollars are accounted for, and I think a lot of this is just a struggle over power, and you serve the people, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Sue. I have Art and Alice Johnson, do both want to speak, or just one, or are you going to come up together? Okay.
We'll come together.
Excellent. Welcome, we're glad you're here.
We're Art and Alice Johnson, we live on 1912 22nd Avenue, Southwest in Wilmer. Mayor and council members, we're here tonight to lend support to our council member Ron Christensen and all- Christensen and also our neighbor, Ron Christensen. Many of our other neighbors in our area support Ron and will continue to support him no matter what happens.
We feel most fortunate to have Ron represent us in Ward Two. We thank him for his honest and sincere dedication to not only the citizens of Ward Two, but also the city of Wilmer. During these past weeks, he truly defines the word integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Moe.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Carrie Moe at 1420 Trotte Avenue Southwest. I would like to take my three minutes to say one thing. I am very proud of all of you to see the process of American politics at work. I'm a little disappointed in the pettiness of some of the issues that are being discussed regarding this community. And I would like to say that I know the difficulty that probably was placed upon the decision-making process of what happened. I'm sure that there probably was litigious problems that you guys had to address, and there are many things that the public probably does not know and will ever know. And as a result of that, the difficulties that all of you end up making in your decisions in regards to what passes in your jobs that you're doing, I have a great sense of, what's the word, compassion, if you will. Ron? Excuse me, I'm old. I'm having a brain fart here. It's a pleasure just to see the process and the civility with which you people are doing this, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Sorry, I mispronounced your name first. Steve Gardner. Okay, that's all we have. Kevin?
No, he waved it off.
There's two pages.
Sorry?
Two pages, you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. Page two. There was space on the bottom of that page, so I apologize. Mike Reese. You've got to be at the mic.
I have to, Mike.
Can you hand him one? Chief Elton, can you have him one in the back there?
Mike Reese, 505 21st Street Southeast. What I was going to say tonight has pretty much already been said, with exception of one thing I'd like to clarify, and that is, our local news media has made statements, and I've talked to them about it. The administrator, the former city administrator, they're saying she was fired. All I want to do is confirm and let people know she was not fired. She resigned. But I just want to make sure. Has everybody I've talked to in City Wilmer thinks she was fired? That's all I got.
Thanks, Mike. Terry?
My name is Terry Reamer. I live at 1907 11th Street Southwest. I promised my wife I wouldn't get worked up, so here's my nitro pill in case I need it.
You might have to hand them over here, too.
Put it under the tongue. I'm here tonight in support of Mr. Christensen. We've talked a few times about the current situation. Something that Harry S. Truman said back in 1958. He says, "Whenever the press quits abusing me, I know I'm in the wrong pew." So hang in there, Ron. I believe that the problem goes way beyond this administrator. I think it goes way back. I think Mr. Christensen opposes spending money downtown, and there's a group of people that want to move an agenda forward about downtown, who have interest downtown, and I think it's that Wilmer, Moving Wilmer Forward group. I believe Mr. Christensen is not afraid to express his opinion. I believe he's not afraid to stand up for what he believes in, and I believe all of those things have been the basis of what's happening today. Who are his attackers? I believe the newspaper. Mr. Truman's with you on that one. I believe the Moving Wilmer Forward group is at the base of this. I think they have interests that are not being stated by the paper or anyone else. I think they have interest downtown to get their buildings fixed for nothing, and we're going to pay for it. That's my opinion of what's going on. I believe that there are a lot of these people, or some of these people, are in support of the Recall Ron Group. The questions I have, maybe the Tribune will pick up on this. What property or businesses do the Moving Wilmer Forward members own or rent downtown? What monies have been sought by this group? From where? What people are on the Recall Ron Committee? Who were the people on the mayor's reelection committee or staff? I believe that there will be several tie-ins in those three groups. Rumor has it that Mr. Christensen and his family are being followed around town and photographed. If so, who is responsible for this? Is this something law enforcement should be concerned about? Somebody following around, whether they're political people? I support Mr. Christensen. I believe he has voted with the best interests of the city of Wilmer in his mind, and I see no reason to recall him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Terry. John?
Terry, it's pills.
Can I keep?
Hello, mayor, council. My name is John Marchand. I live at 631 Haddon Street in Bruton, Minnesota. I've been a council member on this Bruton City Council for about nine years. I've been a firefighter there for getting close to 13 years. I've been pretty well acquainted with the way that elected government works with a small city, anyway. You have to keep the lights on. You have to keep the streets paved. What you always have to do, though, is treat your citizens, your constituency, with respect. That was not on display the night of the Labor Relations Committee. You may think it. That's fine, but don't say it. Your citizens deserve respect. They were not treated with respect. Please bear that in mind, and may the person who was responsible for the comment step forward with an apology. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. Okay. Finance Committee, Councilmember Anderson.
Well, one second here. My computer shot itself down. Okay. The Finance Committee meeting was held on Monday, May 11, convened at 4:45. There were no public comments. First item agenda was to amend the 2015 street improvement budget. Staff presented the proposed amended preliminary budget for the 2015 street improvement program in the amount of $2,138,231. It was noted that as bids are received on various projects included in the 2015 street program, the budget will be amended accordingly. Following discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution approving the amended preliminary budget for the 2015 street improvement program in the amount of $2,138,231 as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
The next item was consideration of forfeited land appraised values. Staff explained to us that Candy Lake County has submitted 38 properties forfeited to the state of Minnesota for non-payment of taxes for the years 2008 to 2013. The county board has placed an appraised value on each parcel. The Wilmer City Assessor has reviewed each parcel and has noted a higher value on each parcel as recorded for tax purposes, and that the listed price is simply prior special assessments plus prior year taxes. The county values will be the starting bid price at the annual auction of forfeited land. It was noted that additional money would remain with the county, so no higher values would benefit the city of Wilmer. If there were no objections to the value on each parcel, the council must sign the document and return it to Candy Lake County. Following a discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee to accept the value stated by Candy Lake County for the 38 properties forfeited to the state of Minnesota as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing and hearing, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
And we looked at some reports. We had the April 30, 15 Convention and Visitors Bureau, first quarter 2015 interest and dividends received, first quarter 2015 investment activity, 331 investment cash portfolio, 10-year historical investment balances by quarter, and 10-year historical interest and dividends by quarter. That was all for information only. Under miscellaneous, we had a couple of items. Number one, the MUC Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement. Staff noted that it had previously been determined by all parties involved in the negotiation of the 2015 Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities would terminate after 12/31/15. So the additional wording that was in there, or until such time as parties shall reach a new agreement, needs to be removed from the original agreement. Copies of this agreement showing revision were distributed. Following discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee to approve the revised 2015 Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
And finally, we had an airport MINDOT grant agreement amendment number two. Staff distributed copies of amendment number two to Minnesota, or Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement number 03960 for 2015 airport maintenance and operation. It was noted that MINDOT revised the amount to be reimbursed to the city of Wilmer to $54,863, which is an increase of $3,227 over the original agreement. This matter was for information only. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. To file a minutes discussion. Councilmember Ammon.
One question, Mr. Mayor. On the tax-forfeited property, those are all residential lots, I believe, correct?
Right.
And the forfeited, they have not paid their taxes in approximately, what, four years? Am I close on that?
Would it be five years?
Five years?
Yes.
And Kevin, another question, Mr. Mayor. Were any part of those taxes not collected to deal with payments for the street improvement that the developer put in, or was that all paid for 100% by the developer when the street and curb and gutter and services were put in?
These are exactly those, our special assessments, which are the majority of these, are the amount of the 10-year special assessments that were sent in 2008, '09, '10, '11, '12, and '13. I believe they paid two years of the special assessments, and the remaining eight are due. These were certified to the county for collection in the last couple of years. You can't certify to the state of Minnesota. So if we sell the lots, this will be collected. It'll pay off that part of the bond. We'll have two years remaining that we'll come back and ask council to recertify those. So two years paid by the contractor, five years in here that we'd get at the lot sale and reassessment will give us the 10-year special assessments of that share of the lot from that development project.
Just to clarify that, so the developer did or did not pay 1% of the cost of the improvements when the street was put in?
Did not.
Did not. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Additional discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Public Works, Public Safety, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on May 12, 2015, in conference room number one at 4:45 PM. Nobody was there to make public comments. Next item was police update. This is for information only. Our chief of police, Mr. Felton, noted that the jail sentence for that day was 144. 81 of those inmates from the Department of Corrections, 63 from Candy Lake County. The calls for service for the previous two weeks were 733. Our police chief comes to our meeting every two weeks, and he gives us the past two weeks of service calls from the police department, and the number was 733. The majority of the calls were for traffic stops, public assistance crashes. Total calls so far this year is approximately 285 calls ahead of 2014 at this same date. There has been an increase in graffiti and thefts of property taken from unlocked cars. He reminded everybody to lock your cars, no matter where it's at, at home, in the driveway downtown, at work. Item number four, which is a resolution, has to do with replacing a patrol vehicle, or patrol vehicles, I should say. Once again, our police chief presented for approval the replacement of three Chevrolet Impala squad cars with three Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles with a change in graphics. The vehicles are identified for replacement in accordance with this year's capital outlay program. $112,881 was budgeted for the vehicles, which includes their decommission, outfitting, marking, and upgrading equipment. Did we have a picture of these at all this show, or not, the new vehicles? Okay, maybe it isn't working. The police department has been using the Impala squad cars for several years, but they are no longer being offered by the manufacturer. The Ford utility vehicle is equipped with a fuel-efficient V6 engine, all-wheel drive, allowing for better handling in the winter months, and the police equipment will be stored in a climate-controlled area and kept at operating temperatures with the increase of interior space. Up to now, they've been carrying a lot of their equipment in the trunk, which in the wintertime gets cold. The defibrillator, I believe, was back there, if I'm not mistaken, and with the new Ford vehicles, they will be able to have the whole inside heated, and all their equipment can be room temperature. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will introduce the resolution, to approve the purchase of three Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles with graphic changes in the amount of $112,881.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly. Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Before I go on to item number five, I want to remind you to look for the new vehicles when they come out. They're very attractive. The graphics have changed on the side, and they were going back to black and white with a colored graphic on the side, "Police." You'll recognize them as they come down the road behind you. Item number five is a resolution also. It has to do with the GIS data license agreement. Staff presented for approval an agreement with the county for access to the GIS data license. The GIS system provides the ability to give geographical data and positional quality on a map. It details the city's parcels and layers of visibility specifying transportation and boundary limits. The data license agreement allows the city to use the system at a biannual cost of $5,035.98 for flyover imaging and an amount of thousand thirty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents for flyover imaging, and an amount of, an annual amount of eighteen thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty cents for the data received on the GIS system. I will introduce the resolution. After some discussion, it was, a motion was made, seconded, passed, and I will introduce that resolution to approve the agreement contingent upon receiving details of the changes within the agreement for the GIS data license access.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced and seconded in discussion. Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Item number six was replacing an engineering pickup. This is also a resolution, Mr. Mayor. Once again, staff brought forth through our committee for approval the purchase of two Ford F-150 pickups for the engineering department in accordance with the two thousand fifteen capital improvement plan. The pickups will be purchased through Nelson Auto Center Incorporated with the Southwest slash West Central Service Cooperative in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-two cents per unit, with a total of fifty thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents, with tax and license added at a later date. Seventy-four thousand seven hundred and six dollars was budgeted for the replacements, and the current units, a nineteen ninety-nine F-150 and a two thousand one Chevrolet Silverado will be sold at the city auction. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the replacement of the engineering pickups with two Ford F-150s from Nelson Auto Center, Inc., in the amount of fifty thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. Roll call?
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Our last item, item number seven, was a miscellaneous discussion. This is for information only. It was noted, staff is working on finalizing the recommendation of a consultant for the facilities master plan, and will be brought to the committee at the May twenty-sixth meeting. One of the Robins Island buildings is possibly in need of gutters to protect the siding from rotting. Frost boils were discussed on Oxford Drive Southeast, with repairs to be done on the Public Works' patching schedule. Also, the committee discussed the use of the trees at the brush site for a company out of Litchfield to be used for turkey bedding. If anybody has a lot of trees they need cut down, if they're going to cut them down, this company would come in and take them away from it, they use them for bedding. That was the last item on our committee, and if there's no further questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes as stated.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to file the minutes, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ammon.
Maybe I didn't make myself clear at the meeting on, I stopped by a plant that was before I got to Litchfield, that deals with wood shavings for turkey burns, and they wouldn't come in and cut down the trees, but I guess I was just bringing up for information to see if the city could salvage some of that tree, of the trees that are rotting at the brush site, and if somebody make use of them, and they seemed like they were interested in recycling those wood products. If, if we had them all out to that area, I don't think they have the equipment to cut down the trees for the city. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fagerly.
We met on Thursday, May fourteenth. Item two, public comments, no one was there to speak to us. Item three, Midwest Terminal Site Purchase Agreement. There are three motions here. Staff presented three documents relating to the Business Development Infrastructure Grant, which was awarded to the city for work at the Midwest campus. As that project moves forward, several documents are required to keep the project on schedule. The documents reviewed by the committee included a development agreement with Midwest dealing with property conveyance, payment of construction costs, and grant administration. Second document was a management agreement between the city and Midwest for the management of the property. It shifts all maintenance responsibility under the grant and project to Midwest. Further, the agreement indemnifies the city from any claims. The third document is an easement from the city to Candy Lake County that grants them perpetual access to the county properties adjacent to the grant site. The easement is being redrafted as a license agreement. I don't know if our attorney, Robert Scott, would like to comment on that? I've never heard of that before.
Certainly, it's, rather than convey a permanent property interest, the city would be conveying essentially permission to another entity to use it, in this case Candy Lake County, to use it for access and for parking. My understanding is that the county has been approached with that and has no objections to that process?
Okay. Thank you. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded to approve the development agreement and to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the document. I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
The second motion was made and seconded and passed to approve the management agreement and to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the document. I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
And the third motion was made and seconded and passed to approve the license agreement, easement with Candy Lake County, and to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the document. I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
I don't think Mr. Sulzer is here tonight.
I didn't see him earlier.
Two weeks ago. But this is the property at Midwest, they're gonna widen the road and make additional parking.
And that's off the grant, right?
It's off the grant.
Yep. And again, that's the first time that a grant has been awarded in southwest Minnesota, so, good job.
It's a good thing.
It's a very good thing.
Item four, Airport Terminal Site Purchase Agreement. This is a motion. Staff presented a purchase agreement submitted by JDB Properties LP for the acquisition of the terminal building and site. The property at the former airport totals four point five one acres, includes former terminal building and accessory structure. The committee discussed how the purchase price was arrived at. Staff said that a previous purchase agreement had been written for two hundred and sixty thousand, with all the buildings remaining on the site. However, since that time, it's been determined that the main building existing on the site represented a liability, and the remediation costs to remove the structure and restore the site was estimated at seventy thousand dollars. Due to the liability to the property, the purchase price was written down to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Staff recommended that the purchase agreement be accepted. The city attorney had offered some comments for minor changes to the purchase agreement, such as incorporating contingencies that staff had suggested previously to the buyer. Those included easement for the beacon, passage of ordinance authorizing the sale, and the final FAA land release approval. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded to approve the purchase agreement with the noted contingencies and to proceed with the ordinance to finalize the sale contingent on the final land release. I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion.
Mr. Mayor, when's the closing going to be on this anticipated closing if this is approved?
Subsequent to the ordinance, the city council must have a hearing, adopt an ordinance to sell property, and that ordinance will be drafted in the coming week and then brought back through to figure out all the details, and I don't believe that will occur maybe a month from today.
Okay.
So then the purchase agreement has to be after the hearing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Weren't we advised we didn't need to have that? So what happened?
It's a sale.
I thought on sale of property, I thought, last time we didn't do it, then we had to come back and do it, so I thought on sale of property, we had to go through the process.
I think we bought property last time.
Right.
In buying property, we do not need an ordinance, in selling property, we need the ordinance.
I just thought it was discussed at the meeting and that it was stated, we didn't need it, because that question had been asked, so.
I believe that was a different issue, and I've already forgotten that issue.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just point a clarification for the city attorney on this sale of property, though we can't, would we do, would we wait to the ordinance until after we get the release from the FAA, or would we do the ordinance before?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, I think as long as the, both the ordinance and the purchase agreement are clear, that it's contingent on that land release happening first, I think that would be okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we good? Councilmember Nelson?
I'm fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Item five, Unsafe Building Declaration. This is a motion. Staff presented photos of a property at eight-ten Campbell Avenue Northwest, showing the condition of the structure. It was obvious in disrepair and in need of demolition. In July fourteenth, the city had issued a permit to the property owner for the demoing of the structure. Since that time, the property has changed its ownership, and the new owner was advised in April that the structure needed to be removed, or action would be taken to seek removal. It has not been demolished as proposed, and it is beyond the point of salvage. A motion was made and seconded at the house at eight-ten Campbell Avenue Northwest, be unsafe, and to initiate the removal proceeding. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Item six, Historic Three Thirteen of Fourth LLC, this is a resolution. The committee reviewed and discussed a development proposal for Three Thirteen Fourth Street Southwest. Being proposed was a new water service to the building that would be constructed as part of the municipal improvement process. In order to proceed, the property owner has agreed to file a petition for improvement and a waiver of special assessments, and also to execute an agreement for utilities and public improvements to allow the project to be assessed with security posted by the developer. It is anticipated that the total cost of the project will be in the fifteen to seventeen thousand dollar range. The city had been seeking a way to assist the project, and the best method identified by staff was to include the service line from the main to the building as part of the city improvement project, and to assess them for the work. Legal counsel has indicated that the project can be included as a municipal project, and that costs can be assessed. Coats are being taken for the work. A motion was made and seconded and passed that a resolution be adopted verifying ownership and ordering improvement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ammon.
The, who are the owners, who are the owners of the building as listed?
It's a nonprofit for...
Mayor Kelvin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
Mr. Peterson would like to speak in the back.
Couldn't see you back there. Mr. Peterson, planning and development director.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, the property owner is...
I don't think your mic is on.
Should be functioning. The property owner is listed as Historic Three Thirteen on Fourth LLC. It is a for-profit company that is made up of two not-for-profit companies, one of which is Wilmer Downtown Design, and the other one is the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota.
Councilmember Ammon, does that help you with your question?
Which leads to my next question. I was involved, I believe, at the time that the Downtown Design Center purchased that, was in the process of acquiring that building and asking for the assistance of the Minnesota Preservation Alliance, and I believe there was a five-year agreement, that after five years, if I could, somebody would refresh my memory on that, but I believe it was after five years that the building was supposed to, they were supposed to be reimbursed for their costs that was loaned, and there were other details involved in that. I'm just curious, is, is a what if, or something happens, is the city not going to be able to collect on that improvement? Or how that process works when there's so many, none, two different owners of the property? This seems a little confusing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Peterson, do you have an answer to that?
I have part of an answer, Mr. Mayor. I can't speak to the existence or whatever content may be in the agreement that you refer to as a five-year agreement. I'm not familiar with that at all. All I know is that they are being treated like any other property owner that would petition for an improvement, and under our developer process, they have to submit a letter of credit as security for a portion of the amount that's being assessed. We've done this in the past for big projects and small projects, and, you know, we have a pretty good track record with it, and so we've just run it through the same as if we would have, as, same as we deal with any other developer request.
Yeah, thank you, Bruce.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's going to go on the tax roll, so if something happens, that'll have to be paid before there's a transfer, if someone else buys it. Problem we ran into, I guess, is back in the eighties when the utilities redid the downtown, this building doesn't have a basement, so the owner at that time didn't want to bring the water line in, and they have to now, because there's going to be a restaurant in there, and it has to be sprinkled, so we need a bigger water line in there, so.
Councilmember Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have a slight correction for the minutes that I think might be appropriate. The reference in the minutes to this project, Historic Three Thirteen, where it says legal counsel, I think for clarification, we, my understanding at the committee meeting was that was bond counsel that gave that okay, and I would suggest that we amend that to bond counsel rather than legal counsel, so there'd be no confusion. In other words, I don't know if Mr. Scott's actually looked at it, but I know the reference was to bond counsel, so.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
This matter has been vetted by both the city's legal counsel and our bond counsel, and we have been given direction from both councils as to how to proceed with this matter to stay within the statutory requirements and the development policies of the city of Wilmer. So we're confident that we're doing this correctly.
So the minutes will reflect the change that Councilmember Johnson asked? Yes. A resolution? All those in favor, I'm sorry, roll call?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
And a motion was made and seconded that the city enter into an agreement for utilities and public improvements and to authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the document.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Item seven, old business. The committee and staff briefly discussed the conditions and enforcement activities for the Mobile Home Parks and the John Supper Club building. If there's no further business, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to file the minutes, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have an ordinance to rezone from R-two to general business. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, the proposal that went before the planning commission last week concerns the former Dairy Queen property on East Highway Twelve. commission last week concerns the former Dairy Queen property on East Highway 12. That property has historically been zoned R2 for residential use. The business existed there as a non-conforming use because it was surrounded primarily by residential structures. A lot of change has occurred in that area with the transition of most of those properties on Highway 12 to, or to multifamily or rental properties, and our recent comprehensive change revision, or comprehensive plan changes and revisions made sure that that area was designated as future commercial, so the recommendation of the planning commission is that an ordinance be introduced to discuss the rezoning and to move forward with the rezoning of that property to a commercial status, as there are several people interested in developing that site.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to proceed with the rezoning and to set the hearing. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign? The motion does carry. Next on the agenda is the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Training. This document was received in the mail today, and so I distributed it, and what I'm asking is that, at the Labor Committee, the motion was made to have the mayor work with the League of Minnesota Cities, and what I would request is that we expand that team to be the labor chair, Steve Ammon, our interim city administrator, Kevin Halliday, and myself. If you'll notice, it does say that they would like to come out and visit with us to make sure that we're covering what the items that we would like to talk about, so I would like that to turn into that team rather than just have me make that decision. So, if that's all right with council, I would appoint those three people to serve on that piece, so. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Just may we share some suggestions, some things that the league has done other places with you to be considered?
Yes, the league had, I've worked with the league in the past on other projects. I have met quite a few times in the last month and a half with the league. I've had numerous phone calls with them. The league has come out and done training for us here before at the city, I believe, and what we would do here, our plan is, is that we would have, some of the training would be at 10 o'clock in the morning, 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and then would be at the evening for council, is what would happen. And so we'd have a meeting at 5 o'clock where that training would start, and then we'd have a meal at 6:30, and then following that, then we'd have the council meeting, so we'd do it on a council meeting night, so we don't have to take another evening away, is kind of the plan. Is that what you're referring to, or?
No, I just had some specific ones that I was hoping that we would, make sure would be on there, so I was just wondering if we're able to make suggestions.
You bet, yes, make suggestions, either to Steve, myself, or to Kevin.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the direction I was trying to get consensus of the council was to deal with the issue of sexual harassment and imagine that, communication skills.
And if you read the letter, those are addressed in the letter.
Yeah, and so, if we can take those two, I don't know how many hours this is going to take, but we take one at a time.
I would anticipate we can get this done in two training sessions.
Yeah, great.
Okay, so that's the direction we'll go. Announcement of council meeting dates, finance.
Mr. Mayor, Finance Committee won't meet next week because that's Memorial Day, so the next meeting for the Finance Committee is June 8th.
Okay. Public Works, Public Safety.
May 26th, 4:45 at City Hall, Tuesday.
Labor.
The 27th or the 10th, either one.
27th.
27th or, right.
Community Development.
We will not be meeting.
Okay. Anything else for the good of your order?
I move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we are adjourned.